Let's try this again. Welcome to everyone. I'd love to see a full house for the board meeting, public hearing. So it's good to have you here. Again, good morning. First thing that we will do this morning is have a public hearing. And I will read the opening statement. This public hearing is held by the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. It's called order and is being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulations. Notice that this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. All statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. If you have a written version of your statement, please submit it to Ms. Hamilton after your presentation. All statements will become a part of the hearing record. There is one agreed board order, a proposed revised one-hour SO2 attainment plan for the Louisville-Jersey County Kentucky non-attainment area, and a request for modification of STAR goals to be reviewed today. Today, the board will be acting on the agreed board order with Cosmos Cement Company. For the other two matters, the board provides a forum for the public hearings in accordance with District Regulations, but does not vote on them. The District will submit this proposed State Implementation Plan, which of course abbreviated SIP or SIP, submitted to the US EPA for approval in accordance with the Clean Air Act, and the District determines whether to approve a STAR program modification request after a public hearing is held in accordance with the ABCD Regulation 5.21. This is because the board also serves as an appeal body for certain decisions made by the District. So first, would the staff please submit the agreed board order with Cosmos Cement Company?
Good morning. My name is Paul Odd, and I'm the Industrial Permitting Manager for the District. The District briefly informed the board an agreed order with Cosmos Cement Company. On August 5th, 2013, the United States Environmental Protection Agency designated a roughly 1.6 square mile portion of southwestern Louisville Metro in and around the Louisville Gas and Electric Company Mill Creek Electric Generation Station as non-attainment for the 2010 one-hour primary SO2 national ambient air quality standard of 75 parts per million. Mill Creek is the sole stationary source of vessel-to-emissions within the non-attainment area. LGD recently completed substantial improvements to the air pollution control network at Mill Creek. The Kentucky Division for Air Quality and the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control District conducted regulatory modeling of Mill Creek in accordance with federal regulations that, with the improvements, does not predict emissions in excess of the one-hour SO2 max. All other sources impacted in the non-attainment area were modeled and accounted for in background ambient monitoring data. A one-hour SO2 plan for the Louisville-Jersey County Kentucky non-attainment area which currently discusses this modeling and demonstrates the area of handling in the one-hour SO2 max is the subject of another public hearing later this morning. As a result of earlier modeling of the Cosmos Cement Company of the Division for Air Quality and the District, the District has determined it is necessary to conduct ambient air quality monitoring to better characterize the ambient concentrations of SO2 in the vicinity of the company's facility and determine whether those SO2 emissions violate the SO2 max outside of the non-attainment area as required by Regulation 3.01. The agreed boarder provides for the development of a source-specific ambient air monitoring site for SO2 in the area of predicted maximum impact south of the Cosmos Cement Company in the previously designated non-attainment area. This air monitoring station will become part of the District's air monitoring network once approved by US EPA. If at the conclusion of the proposed three-year monitoring period, the three-year average of the annual 99 percentile of the daily maximum one-hour average concentrations exceed the one-hour SO2 max, the company is required to submit a risk plan of necessary remedial measures for approval by the District within six months and full implementation of those measures within 30 months of submitting this risk plan. The District asks the board to take note that the version presented to the board today includes some non-substantive issues or typos not shown on the version posted on the District's website. I will recommend that more adopt this order as proposed. Thank you, Dr. Odd.
Thank you, Mr. Odd. Would a representative of Cosmos Cement Company like to make a statement?
We have no statement.
For your statement, as you have no statement. Does anyone on the public wish to make a statement? Are there any questions by board members about this agreed board order with Cosmos Cement Company? Fair enough, and we will move on to the next item of our public hearing session. And would the staff please present the proposed revised one-hour SO2 attainment plan for the Louisville-Jersey County Kentucky non-attainment area? Mr. Period.
Thank you, Dr. Odd. The District is accepting on today a revised one-hour SO2 attainment plan for the Louisville-Jersey County Kentucky non-attainment area. In August 2010, US EPA complicated the revised one-hour national ambient air quality standard for max for sulfur dioxide, 75 parts per million average over three years. Mr. Odd is explaining that August 2013, EPA designated a small area in the southwest corner of Jersey County as an non-attainment for this new standard. The area is primarily the property of Louisville Gas and Electric Mill Creek Generating Station and a portion of the neighborhood immediately to its north. In order to meet new emission standards for power plants promulgated by EPA around this same time, Mill Creek facility had significant controls including new flue gas desulfurization units which substantially decreased their emissions of SO2. The District has placed new limits relating to these controls in the Title V agreement for the Mill Creek facility. The attainment plan primarily relies on these new controls to achieve attainment. As a result of these emission reductions, ambient concentrations of SO2 in the non-attainment area decreased precipitously. Monitoring for 2016 shows a design value for the past three years of 76 parts per million and a one-year concentration of 17 parts per million. Monitoring of STAR in 2017 shows a 99 percentile of 28 parts per million. The District anticipates, and this attainment demonstration shows, that the partial non-attainment area is expected to be attained before the required attainment date of October 2018. The attainment plan also contains a comprehensive base year projected emission inventory, a model demonstration of attainment throughout the non-attainment area, conformity requirements, provisions for new source review in the non-attainment area, and conditions to measure in the event of attainment does not reach the desired target. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Period. Does anyone for the public wish to make a statement about this issue? Are there any questions by board members?
Just curious, after the installation of the new FGD, what's the removal efficiency of sulfur dioxide compared to the removal was before?
Correct me if I'm incorrect, but I believe their control efficiency prior to the addition of the FGDs was around 90 percent, and they increased that to about 98 percent efficiency.
Are there any other questions by board members? Fair enough, we will move on to the third item of our public hearing session. And would the staff please submit a request for modification of STAR goals by American Synthetic River Company? Mr. Odd.
Thank you, Dr. Odd. The District received a request for modification from American Synthetic River Company, or ASRC, to modify certain environmental acceptability goals under the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction, or STAR, program. It is this proposal that is the subject of today's hearing. The District is not proposing to put in the STAR program regulations. The STAR program was adopted in 2005 in response to concerns about air toxics in West Louisville. Some of those groups today were involved in the public process of development and passing the STAR regulations. The regulations require large companies to characterize and quantify their toxic air contaminant emissions and compare them to the environmental acceptability goals of the STAR program. For non-industrial property, places where people live and play, the goal is one in a million from a single chemical from a single process and seven and a half in a million for all chemicals from all sources at that facility. For industrial property, the goals are adjusted by a factor of 10. The regulations also provide modifications of these goals if the company uses the best available technology for toxins, or KEBAD, to achieve the maximum reductions in and risk from toxic emissions for those goals that it is seeking to modify. ASRC is seeking to modify environmental acceptability goals on non-industrial property for emissions of 1329 from two separate processes, flare and fugitive emissions. ASRC's modification request does not modify cumulative plant-wide environmental acceptability of seven and a half in a million for non-industrial property. ASRC has also applied to modify the environmental acceptance goals on industrial property for fugitive emissions of 1329, including the cumulative plant-wide environmental acceptability goal of 75 in a million. It may amend its original request for modification in the future. ASRC has proposed flare thermal oxidizer, or TEBAD, for emissions that had gone to its flare, which now serves as a backup control device. Proposed TEBAD for fugitive emissions include enhanced leak detection and repair, replacement of all rupture discs in 1329 service, reduced thresholds for first attempt at repairs, and reduced leak repair time frames. If the District approves the modification, the regulations require that a company reevaluate TEBAD every five years and it reduces its operating time. The regulations also provide that the District may require a company to implement a revised TEBAD at any time if it would achieve greater compliance with the original environmental acceptability goals. Additional details about ASRC's request for modification and proposed forceful permitting conditions are available on the District's website. A second public comment period has been opened, and a second public hearing on the request for modification will be held May 17, 2017, at 6:00 PM in this room. If ASRC revises its request for modification, the District will instead of the public comment period and notify the public via legal notice in the Courier-Journal, due delivery, and by posting on the proposed action portion of our website. Any documents related to the revised dismissal will also be posted there. Public comments, whether submitted in writing or made as part of a public hearing, will become part of the record. A written response to comment document will be made available at the time the District makes a final determination on ASRC's request for modification.
Thank you, Mr. Odd. Would a representative of American Synthetic River Company like to make a statement?
Yes.
Would you like to do some visuals, please? Is this working? Could you use your view for some back wall? Yeah, it would be much... Any projector for this back white wall? And those of us who are in the way will get out of there. Just pointed out to you that there are some seats in the audience supposed to do to have a stand or want to sit down in that business.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Guillaume Bauton. I have the immense pleasure of being the plant manager of American Synthetic River Company. I have worked at ASRC for now 18 years. I've held a variety of positions in the plant. And it has led me to be the plant manager for the past three years. I would like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to make a statement. So the purpose of our presentation today is to give you background information on American Synthetic River Company emissions. There's been a lot of interest for American Synthetic River Company emissions, and we thought we would give you some background information in terms of our record and what we're doing to improve and reduce our emissions. So first off, I would like to show you our record so that we do not have any misperception of what ASRC's record is. So what you see on this graph, and I'll describe it, is at the bottom, the emission from 2003 to 2016. And what you see is the height of the bar graph is basically the emissions of 1329. There are two types of emission. There are stack emissions and fugitive emissions, and we'll describe what they are. So what you see from that graph is that in 2003, we were in the 110,000 pounds of emission from American Synthetic River Company. And what you see is in the period of 2003, '04, and '05, we significantly lowered our emission of about 90 percent. And since 2006, our emissions have been consistently 90 percent less than what they were in 2003. ASRC is not seeking to increase its emission over time. We're trying to do the opposite. So I wanted to make that record very public and very known that we have been since 2006 90 percent lower emission than 2003. So let's talk a little bit more about what stack emission and fugitive emissions are because they are critical to understand when it comes to the STAR program. So first off, a stacked emission is kind of what it means, is comes out of stacks. So at ASRC, we have two emissions from stacks. We have the flare stack, which is here, and the flare thermal oxidizer. The flare stack collects all the plant emissions into those black pipes here and goes up that stack. And at the top of that stack, there's a flame that destroys those emissions. In 2005, ASRC voluntarily installed the flare thermal oxidizers to reduce its emission. That's what it looks like. So it's a much more efficient system to destroy emissions, and there is almost nothing that comes out of that stack. Currently, the flare stack that you see here is still at ASRC's impact as a backup to the flare thermal oxidizer. So should that flare thermal oxidizer go down for maintenance, we have a backup solution. So that's what we mean when we talk about stacked emission. In 2005, the flare thermal oxidizer was recognized as best available technology as Mr. Odd implemented for the STAR program. So that's the first category, stacked emission. The second category of emission is called fugitive emission. So let's talk about what fugitive emission means. Well, fugitive emissions are tiny little amount of emission that come out of piping systems. You can't see them, they're invisible, they're so small. And what we do is we have a third-party contractor that monitors those connectors for fugitive emission. You see a technician right there, he's holding a detector and he's looking for emissions. What you see here is a flange on a pipe, and this is the valve. So those have the ability to, it means very small amount of leakage. So what we do is monitor those connectors very frequently in the factory. But in fact, ASRC spends $350,000 every year just to do the monitoring. It doesn't even include the cost of the repair. So just to monitor, we spend $350,000. So that's what fugitive emission is. So the technician puts his little wand, and then the question is, will it find something? Well, if you found that the amount in measure exceeds a certain threshold, then we immediately initiate a repair process. And that repair process consists of several steps. The first thing we do is we try to time the connection just to make sure that that doesn't start the leak to begin with. If that's not successful, then either two things. Either we shut down the process and do the repair, or we put an engineered clamp on that connector to start the leak, and that's what you see here. We physically install an engineer system that starts the leak. Okay, so again, you have stacked emissions, flare thermal oxidizer, and then the fugitive emissions. Now, let's go back to the STAR program when it was enacted in 2005. So when the STAR program was enacted, as Mr. Odd referred to, there's several components for the STAR program. They are the all chemical, when he refers to all tags from all sources, and then there's the single chemical from either fugitive or stack. In 2006, when ASRC first complied with STAR, we already had to make a request for modification because what we found is that we could meet the goal for all tags, all chemicals, for both industrial property and non-industrial property. But we were having difficulty with the single tag, single chemical, and butadiene in particular. So back in 2006, or 2007, we worked with the District to establish best available technology. The framework of the STAR program is clear. If the company cannot meet the goal, it has, the company has to demonstrate best available technology. So back in 2007, that's what we did. We obtained best available technology for stack through the use of the thermal oxidizer, and we implemented a series of improvement on how to deal with fugitive emission back then. That was the first one. The Airborne, the Air Pollution Control District approved that modification request back in 2008. Now, in 2013 and '14, it's very hard to see, but ASRC exceeded the goals that were set up in that agreement of 2008. Again, it's very difficult to see because we're so much lower than we used to. But we still exceeded those goals. So obviously, we had to then go back to the Airborne, and we entered an agreed board order to implement another series of measures to demonstrate best available technology. And that's why we're here today. So in 2015, if you remember, we took the agreed board order. We agreed to do a series of things. Everybody okay? All right. And so we are here today to put a second request modification. Now, something that is very important is that we formulated our second request for modification based on the 2013 and the 2014 results. And now in 2016, we've obtained great results, and we see that we want to further reduce the amount we're requesting in the modification. So what are they? Let's talk about those. Those are the numbers that Mr. Odd introduced in the beginning. So there is the all chemical from all processes. Industrial, meaning within the fence line of ASRC. And non-industrial, which is means in the neighborhood adjacent to ASRC. And those are the goals that you see, the environmental acceptability goals. So when we did exceed the goals in 2013, 2014, we requested a proposed modification goal, and what you see are the numbers that we requested. After we implemented the elements of the board order, we obtained very good results in 2016. And that allows us today to further amend our proposed request for modification and reduce the request for modification. We made a press release last week that actually announced that we are no longer requesting modification for the all type of processes on industrial source. So this is the status of where ASRC is. So we are in the process of formulating a revised request for modification that includes the very good results that we obtained in 2016. So as you saw, sorry, as you saw here, because we implemented the thermal oxidizer, the majority of our emission now are fugitive. They're normally stacked, they're fugitive. So the question that you may ask is, what are, what is ASRC doing to reduce its fugitive emission? And what I would like to show you is the best available technology that we've come up with. And more importantly, I will show you the results that we obtained with this best available technology. So Mr. Odd already alluded to them in his introduction. The first one is, we replaced all the rupture discs in the butadiene service. But our analysis showed that those were all prone to have fugitive emissions. So we invested and we replaced all of them. That's done, we did that in 2015. We also changed the definition of what's called a leak. You remember the technician that goes with his wand and looks for an emission? Before, he was looking for 500 parts per minute. So anything that would be above 500 parts per minute would be considered a leak. We've changed that threshold to 250 parts per minute. So we went fifty percent lower. What that means is that now, at a lower level, we'll be initiating a repair. That's the place, we're doing that. We've also increased the amount of monitoring that we do. And for your benefit, I have summarized what we're doing in terms of increased monitoring. That's the table that you see here. So those are the type of connectors that we monitor at ASRC. And I'm going to use one example. I'm going to use the example of the valve. That was the, that valve that was on that picture from the technician. That's a valve right there. We have a significant number of those valves. So before the implementation of the STAR program, we would send a technician to check every valve once a year. In two thousand and seven, when the board agreed to the board, to the modification request, we went semi-annually, so twice a year, we'd check for those valves. Since the revised agreed board order, we're not doing that quarter, four times a year. I would like to point out that some of the connectors, before the implementation of the STAR program, were only monitored every four years. In two thousand and seven, we went semi-annually, now we're doing it four times a year. I would like to also point out that before the STAR program, I think there were exams that were not even checked at all. That were checked semi-annually in two thousand and seven, and now we check quarterly. So when we say we're doing best available technology to reduce fugitive emission, that's what that means. Now, let me show you the result because you could say, okay, that's interesting, but what about the results? So that's on the chart here. What you see here are the results of ASRC's fugitive emissions from two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, where we had issued a cave-in from the board, to two thousand and sixteen. And this is the amount of emission for that year. So what you see is in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we were in the seven-thousand-pound range. In twenty sixteen, we obtained very good results below four thousand. That represents a forty-seven percent reduction in the butadiene fugitive emission. So that, this is our STAR works. We go in front of the board, we agree to best available technology, we implement those best available technologies, and then we get results. So I would like to leave you with some thoughts. First off, I want to tell you that we really strive for solid cooperation and transparency with the public. ASRC has been a proud member of the Rubber Town community advisory council for many, many, many years, and ASRC attends every monthly meeting. I encourage you, if you're interested, to join the Rubber Town community advisory council because every month, we get an opportunity to exchange between the public and between the companies on what's going on with the companies. Strongly encourage you to join if you're interested. We would like the district to, we'd like to request the district to recognize that ASRC is diligent in implementing the best available technology and that we would like the modification to be granted. Mind you, after we amend that request for modification based on the good results of twenty sixteen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any of the speakers from the public now may need slides to show their presentation back. If not, we assume that the point of view... Now, does anyone from... I understand that there are members of the public who wish to make a suggestion. They have signed up at the beginning and I'm going to ask Secretary Rachel Hamilton to recall them. At this time.
Good morning. Uh, any questions, please? So I wasn't told that there was a time limit. I'm hoping you all allow me to finish.
I don't think you have time to finish. Sorry.
I probably need some technical expertise here. Okay. So I wasn't told, I wasn't sure what the time limit was for speaking. I'm hoping you guys allow me to speak my entire, make my entire statement. ASRC got maybe around thirteen minutes and I think the community, the community hardly ever gets to attend these meetings, so I hope you guys listen. So the first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to make a statement, very short, on behalf of React. Then I'm going to make a statement that is a joint statement between React and the Kentucky Resources Council. And then I'm going to end that with another very short statement that is React's own. So, in two thousand and three, ASRC was one of the companies denying its emissions were high. So I'm glad to see that today, they are now owning that in two thousand and thirteen, they had very high emissions of butadiene. Hopefully, they continue to improve as they should. While we are elated that ASRC has decreased their emissions significantly, they are still not meeting the goal set. You do not reward success by allowing potential increased risks to health. This is a single chemical that we're talking about, but they admit many and so do the companies near them. Because of the threat of STAR, ASRC reluctantly did the right thing. So let's uphold the goals, the goals and standards set to ensure that ASRC continues the work toward reductions. So that was my little snippet on behalf of React. Now I'm going to read you a joint statement between React and the Kentucky Resources Council. I'm Anthony Neil Cogburn and I'm here providing a joint statement from React and the Kentucky Resources Council Incorporated in opposition to the request for modification by American Synthetic Rubber Corporation of certain standards of the STAR program. The council was actively involved in the development of the STAR program. React was instrumental in garnering community support for the program. STAR is a program that has been recognized nationally as a model of addressing and reducing the risks to workers and the public associated with emissions of toxic chemicals into the ambient air from industrial sources. It has been twelve years since the APCD adopted the STAR program requiring manufacturers such as ASRC to demonstrate the environmental acceptability of their air emissions and to submit a compliance plan to achieve target risks limits for individual and all air toxic emissions or to seek a modification of such goals after installing the best available technology for toxics, toxics, or T-PAC. T-PAC is defined as an emission standard reflecting the maximum reduction in emissions of and risks from toxins. It may include work practices, air pollution control equipment, equipment maintenance measures, and alternative processings and process designers. It has been almost a decade since ASRC submitted and received approval of modified standards for any emissions of one-three-butadiene from the flare and from fugitive sources. It should be noted that while the STAR program has set risk-based goals translating into numerical emission standards based on calculated risks of exposure, there is no level at which exposure to workers or the public from a carcinogen such as one-three-butadiene is therapeutic or beneficial and no linear threshold below which such exposure to carcinogens is about health risk. The request for modification that the staff proposes to approve comes in the wake of two thousand and fifteen enforcement action taken after the district determined that emissions of one-three-butadiene exceeded the already relaxed modified EA goals or emissions from fugitive sources approved in two thousand and eight. The final resolution of that enforcement action has not yet been presented to the public or the board. And we are entitled to know why it is that the proposed technology and other actions approved in two thousand and eight failed to produce reductions in emissions levels below the relaxed individual EA goals that are approved at that time. The STAR program was not intended as a validation of the use of the public's air for toxic waste disposed from industrial facilities. It was intended to drive down emissions in a continuous manner as technology and process modifications progress with the goal of elimination rather than merely management of such risks. It certainly was not intended to reward non-compliance with further relaxation of EA goals or by allowing increased emissions and elevated risks to workers or the public. Yet, ASRC proposes and the staff recommends approved increased emissions of one-three-butadiene from fugitive sources and a modification of EA goals for both the general and workers. React and the council believe that any further modifications or extension of modified EA goals should be rejected. React and the council also request the following actions be taken. One, resolution of the pending enforcement action, including as part of an agreed board order, an independent assessment commissioned by staff and paid for by ASRC as to whether the existing T-PAC for both all emission resources remains the best technology or whether there are additional enhancements in process and emissions control equipment that could reduce or eliminate the need for continued or expanded modifications. Two, public review of that assessment and of a proposed final order in the pending enforcement action. And three, production by ASRC of an assessment of the health effects of exposure of one-three-butadiene to workers and the public for any emissions proposed in excess of individual EA goals. It should be remembered that a modification can be improved if it meets two standards in the STAR regulations. First, that T-PAC is or will be met, and second, that the resulting emission standard would provide an ample margin of safety to the exposed population. Meeting T-PAC alone does not allow imposition of unsafe levels of emissions to the public or workers. And that assessment must be specific to the chemical or chemicals involved and be based on best available toxicological information. Now, that's the end of our combined statement and I have a small word for React. All right. So I would like to add that leading up to the adoption of the STAR program, members of this community put tireless unpaid hours of work towards studying the STAR program, providing data-driven comment and increasing support for it. There was a community consensus that this is what the community wanted and what was in the best interest of the community's health. At the time, it was reported that it was the largest response to a comment period that the APCD had ever received, either in writing or by the number of people who showed up at the hearing, which is, which is evidence that people in the community wanted these restrictions to pollution. We have a right to clean air. Please do not undermine our efforts, our health or our safety to appease a company that must bear the cost of business. Don't, uh, Captain, I have my head up. Don't, uh, please don't continue to put this burden of toxic chemicals on the backs of the citizens who live in this, in this city and on the workers. And I will say that, you know, sometimes this data is misleading. So when people in the community hear, oh, there's only going to be two cancers within one million people and blah, 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 it's a lot more serious than that. Because number one, one-three-butadiene is not only a carcinogen, but it's associated with respiratory illness, cardiovascular illness, neurological illness, all of these things. So it's a lot more, a lot more ailments are associated with it. And we want you guys to do the responsible thing and err on the side of caution. We, the people in the public, don't have the dollars that ASRC has. I went to probably almost all of the hundred-and-twenty stakeholder meetings that were held back leading up to the two-hundred, two thousand and five adoption of the STAR program. And multiple people in the community had to take off work, unpaid show up, miss family dinners because it was that important for us to be healthy and safe. ASRC, every time they showed up to the stakeholders meeting, their consultants, their lawyers, their employees were getting paid. Okay? So we need you guys to do the responsible thing. This should be, any, any, any decisions you made should come through the lens of community health and community safety, not through the lens of how easy can we make it for these companies, okay? The reason that ASRC did such a great job initially in reducing their one-three-butadiene emissions was because of the threat of STAR. It wasn't even, even before STAR was implemented, they were threatened by STAR, so they started doing the work. So let's keep that threat alive by holding fast to the standards that were set so that ASRC can continue to reduce their emissions as they have to, and we can reduce them so that we'll be safe in our homes. So if we go after our kids, you know, we could have a happy family game of tennis in the park without smelling emissions, and I'm not talking about specifically one-three-butadiene, but any emissions that you come out with. I shouldn't have to go to Chico's Park and say, oh, son, we can't play tennis today because I'm smelling over-stormed companies like yours. Or there's some kind of water gap. I should be able to walk down the beautiful parkway that we live near and know that my son is not going to go home with some sort of respiratory illness. So you, you guys need to do your best and, oh, sorry. You guys, sorry, mom. You guys need to do your best to continue to produce. And I do applaud you for that initial production, but you need to continue. There's no excuses and for your workers too.
Thank you everyone. I have a meeting next week.
Anthony Silver.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, we'll applaud you young lady for all of our statistics, our passion, and I appreciate your diligence. I'm a new homeowner at the parking lot and it's no secret, you know, it's, you smell stuff down there, hurry up. Sometimes so bad that you can't be outside. I want to use your statistics against you. I'm a numbers guy. And in two thousand and thirty, I didn't see any fugitive emissions. It's only went up, even though you reduced, I want your overall emissions. The fugitive has went up. Then you had a forty, forty-seven percent reduction in one-three butadienes. Okay. That's great. So why change it? According to your statistics, let me pull it up on my phone, it's a picture of it. You wish to do nine times the non-industrial. Okay, on industrial EA on all tags, you wish to go from seventy-five to a hundred. You want to double the number of one-three butadiene here from one to one-point-nine-three. Uh, industrial fugitives, you want to go from ten to ninety-six. So that's a nine-time increase, uh, increase. Uh, in non-industrial, you want to go from one to four-point-one-four. That's a four-times increase. So why would you want to relax everything if you're doing such a good job or attempt? Continue to do exactly what you've been doing. Right. So I'm just a concerned homeowner, you know, I own a couple of houses down there. My aunt, she's lived down there. I can't, I can't remember where I lived there. But anyway, she lives on our downtown parkway, my mother lives on the beach. And we've always smelled that smell. I'm not saying it's on you because we have a waste management, you know, a water company down there. And so it's not on you, but if we care about systems, then let's just keep with the reduction. If you're doing such a great job, we'll have to want a relaxation if it didn't gotten us to the hour and instead. That's all I'm saying.
Councilwoman Jessica Green.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone.
I represent the twenty-seven, roughly twenty-seven thousand people who are in District One to include the individuals in the Rubber Town area, in the Rubber Town plants. I have enjoyed a respectful relationship with all of the plants since I've been office, I've taken tours of many of the plants, I've talked to employees. I have been appreciative of their contribution to the community and to our schools. With all that being said... With all that being said, I've also been very clear that when there is a time to draw a line in the sand, I will always err and stand up and advocate for the community that I was elected to serve. With that all being said, I want to make it very clear, I've said it publicly and will continue to say it publicly, that I am unapologetically and I'm critically opposed to the modifications for this plant. I can't speak all of the scientific and the experts for that, but what I do have to do is speak in the language of the people. It is poor policy to grant this modification. It is also a slap in the face to the hundreds of individuals who spent countless hours working on the STAR program. Most importantly, it is a complete slap in the face of the residents who live in these neighborhoods. It's a slap in the face to say, well, hey, we're reducing it, so hey, just deal with what we give you. Right before I came here, I was coming from 18th and Broadway, the major announcement for West Louisville. With all that being said, every time you take one step forward, it seems like you are pushed five steps back from West Louisville. And that we are forced to bury the blocks for the entire city of Louisville. We are forced to bury the blocks for these plants. I am very appreciative and do applaud them for their reductions. However, there is still more work to be done. And so instead of us saying, hey, go home, it doesn't matter because the reductions are there. Hey, those people on West Louisville, if we reduce it, who cares if they get a little bit of cancer? We should continue to say to these corporations, continue to work hard, continue to march for it. These regulations were put in place for a reason. I don't ever want to feel like the regulations were put in place just to appease vocal people. The regulations, in my estimation and in my belief, were put in place for companies to be, to have to follow. Let's force these corporations to have to follow the rules that are put in place, and let's not change the rules mutually. My people cannot take anymore. I don't know how much and how vocal I can be when I say this. People are suffering, and people feel like nobody cares. The residents' lives are more important than a modification for a company. Please respect the lives of the people in District One. I will be here every single time you all convene to have this discussion because I want you all to know how serious this is to me. I live in these same neighborhoods, the same neighborhood with my children. My children's lives and my lives are as important as the lives of anybody else around the entire city of Louisville. Please give the constituents of District One the same respect that you will want to have for your own families and your own communities. And I'm asking and imploring you all to reject this modification. Thank you very much.
Barbara Boyd.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Barbara Boyd, and I'm here representing the Kentucky Alliance Against Racism Political Repression. I'm also a resident of West Louisville, and I live in the area that's affected by the Rubber Town emissions expens. I apologize for my voice because Rubber Town, I believe, has affected me personally because I had a surgery recently for thyroid cancer. Cancer is not running my family. But my story is gonna be personal because in the last several years, I've lost a dog. It doesn't just affect people. We've lost two expensive dogs. I had a giant schnauzer that we were petting one day, and he had a series of lumps. And he had lymphoma. Dogs don't usually die of cancer. And I thought it was just, you know, my animal. But then my daughter, who lived a few blocks away, who had an American staphylococcus, started getting lumps on its head, and it developed cancer. So, and in the last few weeks, I have to go back in and have another surgery. And I still live in that area. So we have to do something because our lives do matter. We need to be safe. And I have a question for the gentleman that did the presentation. Is your office located in that area, or is your office somewhere else?
It's in the plant.
In the plant? Do you wear any protective clothing? Masks? Do your employees? Does OSHA regulate anything in there where they come in and you have to have any kind of protective anything? Or do you just walk in like we walk in and out of our house every day?
We just walk in like we walk in.
You don't have to wear anything special.
But he gives them.
But you get to leave, so you're not there 24/7. You don't work, I mean, you don't play where you work. So the other thing is, we want to encourage you to start holding your meetings in the evening where residents that have to work for a living can be represented. There are hundreds of people that would want to be here today. And it's not really fair that you get to be here and get paid. You're working right now. Well, you might be retired, I'm retired too. So I don't have the luxury of being here. And I'm a volunteer as well. But everybody is not. And I'm sure that the people that are here from Rubber Town are not volunteers. And I'm sure that the people that are here from Rubber Town are being petted. But the people of the community need to be represented, and their voices need to be heard. And, you know, even if you did a survey, we need to be at the table. We do not want, we really don't want Rubber Town over here at all. I think if you could find some vacant lands somewhere else, away from people, that would be the best, that would be a limited situation for everybody. Because our health is at stake. We're dying. 20 years ago, before I moved into my house, I noticed that there was a pattern. Everybody that was in my community, they were dying within months of each other. So we just have it different than neighbors. And now it looks like the same thing happening. The neighbors on each side of me are dying, and it's because it's environmental. And we have to do better. We don't want you to relax any laws in order to be able to do your job, in order to be able to do whatever it is that you do over there. It's toxic. That place lights up like a balloon at night. You can just see the flames coming out of it, and you know it's not even good. So we do not recommend that you endorse relaxing the standards in order to allow the company. Do not relax the regulations for the company to...